Go back, we can't pay this janitor person. We're paying the full-time deputy, full-time, and we're gonna pay him part-time. They're gonna give us a check, and we're gonna write a check to the deputy.
Well, yeah, they're paying for it, where does it go?
They're paying for the security by renting it.
And if I get the alcohol, I guess, the best argument to get that is an order. An order to actively, actively protect ourselves. And we almost have to have somebody there who works for us to spitz in the alcohol. So that you've got someone who can make the judgment, and says, you know, Commissioner Whitey, he's not.
We have to go through the certificating class. And once you certify through the A B C, that really just your liability in a lawsuit. Because you're supposed to be able to recognize that business and talk about it, not serve. Now, if you do serve.
But we need somebody to represent us, if we're gonna have alcohol last year. But we're gonna have, we're gonna sell alcohol.
Yeah.
We gotta have somebody who's spending.
This is a conversation we can have if you decide to sell alcohol as of right now, we decide not to.
It sounds very much like it.
And what's that?
It sounds like an option.
At least, unless there's something, somebody coming across, looking all the way down to the office. I don't think, I don't think that's gonna happen. But the V I O B, they're thinking of rolling on in. Because you can't, you know, anybody can be sued. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't stop the tax. But how many times, you know, people driving down the, driving down the road all the time, whether it's legal or not, there's drinking beer driving down the road. Okay, the state doesn't get sued for letting them drink a beer and go down the road in their car. Okay, it's gonna be the same thing as, okay, they're gonna have to target us. Because they sat in our facility and drank a beer. They were sitting in that car going down the road drinking beer, that belongs to the state. That's.
Go back to the office again. The way the contract is now, if you don't have alcohol, you rent the facility. An officer is not required. If you're gonna have alcohol at the facility, and you're gonna pay for two extra officers. Granted, but the county is gonna schedule that officer to work here. And whoever we hire, that's gonna do the booking, do the scheduling, is gonna be the one scheduling the officer. And the county will pay that officer full-time as a deputy. And if he goes and works security, he's gonna get paid by the county for working out there.
Why? That's how they're gonna do it. Whether the county or Wilson County goes and work.
They're gonna pay.
They get paid on board.
We're not doing that.
Why?
Because that's where y'all approved the contract that we presented to y'all.
What contract?
Our contract.
That we voted on. We approved a price schedule that we're voting on by court.
Yeah, but that's, that's.
That was already scheduled.
But that's for the people paying for the cars.
What I'm saying is, if you go there, if Paul filed rent for facility, and I do not, am I gonna have alcohol? The contract or the pricing says, you do not require officers.
Okay.
If I'm gonna have alcohol, it's $250 more. So you're gonna pay the county $250 more to have officers.
You're paying the showbar.
No, they're not paying you, they're paying the county.
Well, the county, yeah, pays them on the showbar. But you're, you're paying on that contract with the showbar.
Yes, and so that person that was gonna be doing the booking is gonna schedule that officer to work out.
They have a contract with the sheriff's office, they're gonna call.
You're right. We're, the way it's written.
We're not hiring a deputy on duty.
No, 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 nothing about being on duty. We're saying that whoever we're gonna hire to do these bookings, or that does the booking between us and the county's board, when they sign that contract.
The bars are written on the holiday to pay the deputy out of the county.
They are, they're gonna pay the county.
No, 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 no.
Then we gotta change the whole contract.
They even pay the deputy director.
Then the whole contract needs to be changed.
They're gonna check it.
But here's the problem with that is, if they already worked 86 hours preparing to go work over there, wouldn't that be considered?
That's okay. That's why the people who rent all have to pay the security director.
Yeah, it's gonna be changed.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Did we okay the contract, or just okay the fee schedule?
As part of the fee schedule.
That is the fee schedule, we didn't.
And as part of it, so that's the fee schedule is what that part was, that's what they're.
No, we didn't approve the contract. We approved just the fee schedule.
That's basically the contract.
Well, it should be.
And then as part of the fee schedule is whether you want an officer or not, whatever some kind of.
Well, that's what every all-duty officer gets paid by the person, right? Not by the county, not by the board. They're paid by.
No, 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 nothing about the department. That doesn't do it.
Well, Paul, they pay by the county.
Through the, it's the same thing.
They did, they paid individually by the person, right?
Then we need to change it.
That's right.
You have a county set the contract, and they're pretty good, some of the fees get.
Yes.
That's a part of the fee schedule.
Okay, but the fee schedule, is that what you're gonna pay?
The fee schedule, I'm gonna say.
How much money, okay. Now, here's, here's something on the fee schedule. It has, if, like Paul was saying, if you do not have alcohol, it costs you this much. If you do have alcohol, it's another $250. That's what it's gonna cost. All we need to do is establish that that $250 goes straight to the deputy.
Right.
Not through us.
Right.
I think the deputy's gonna accept.
And we have, okay, a contract, if we have a contract, and the contract is saying, you know, this is the cost it's gonna be, this goes to the county, this goes to security.
Whoever's responsible, pay the deputy.
Yeah, pay the deputy this amount.
Okay, Judge, the last thing on this, before we go to the next agenda item, one-time expenses. I don't, do an ADA survey, or we need to do something that's good?
We need, we need somebody to help us all.
Just to give us assistance.
And then, Dragan, capable of doing that?
No. And serve again.
We need that, and we also need a reprisal for the station? Do we wanna do anything on the front of the property, do you have a banner, a plastic banner or something?
We need to sign it.
We need to repaint the front of it, because it says Wilson County Show Bar. And we need landscapeing, but.
Yes.
I don't.
What's a minimum we need to get out of that?
The landscape, we, we could set a broader. Monday after, excuse me, Friday afternoon, will somebody go up there with a gun torch? And cut off that. Get a, get a, right in front of you, go right in the middle of the front, been there for years. I just want to see that go.
They pull up those pieces, those two claws.
Just ADA at the station right now is a priority. And something as far as the sign, not a sign, but a banner.
Okay, on this station, some group, somebody had a contact number, give them a call.
The person that has the contact number, so I didn't say it was gonna be so far, he told us.
Yeah, Brian had somebody. We need to get in touch with them, and say, hey, you know, this station is prepared for a mechanic repair. Or give us a plastic repair.
Hope you have, you know, I have.
What's that?
I'll, I'll go research a little bit.
Okay, if y'all got anything else on this agenda, I'll have to judge it.
You're good, you're good with this? Okay, for, for right now, the number, Commissioner Whitey suggested 65,000? And this is a general line item, this is not itemized. They will, them will work on itemized. Okay, to clear up everything, as of Friday afternoon, if somebody wants to rent a facility, we really call the county.
The judge said, can you leave movement?
Call, call the judge's office. Is the judge gonna issue the key?
I guess I'll have to, to file for my attorney.
What's that, will you pay it off, or?
January 4th, which is Friday.
That's what we're closing on?
Yeah.
January, the morning.
So, my question, because I've already got people calling, is.
Well, you can take, you can.
No, I'm, I said I wasn't a new judge.
I wasn't either, but somebody's asked that.
That's why we're gonna ask somebody. That's why we're gonna pay somebody.
But that's what we're gonna.
We're gonna go ahead.
But for right now, we have to work on what we have.
That's right. Next reason I said, if nobody else is doing it, I will do it.
And any good place to get the key?
Yeah, are you not gonna work with us?
I'm saying I'm gonna work with you, Judge. I, I did the last thing to explain to you. I know how many calls I get, I know where it is. It's getting me laughed, but you don't realize how many phone calls I get.
I get a lot of calls to Paul.
I get calls to us.
And, yeah, because of your vote, and because of your vote, and not because of.
Okay, now, right now, until we get this new person established, the number to call is 393-730-30. And I don't get, generally, to either get a name or a number, or a transfer.
And whoever posts it from there on, when they sign that contract, the voter.
We need a contract established by Friday afternoon.
Is that what Mr., the other member of the community, Mr. Tabb?
He's not signing any contracts, all he is.
Now, I need to say, I need to sign a new contract. Is that what, isn't that what he brought up here, an example of a contract?
Talking about, uh, Mr. Tabb? Yeah, he brought us a, a sample of this. Yeah, if, if you had a chance to look.
Yeah, look at, I mean, it's, it's general, which one they.
Yeah, well, just something we can get started, where we can bind the people. And has it got a, a, the deposit? On the place there for deposit?
I'd have to look at it.
There is. Okay, there is. I don't agree with you. And are they gonna pay the judge's office if they want to rent, and put it in deposit, right?
Well, they know they're looking at treasures, officer.
No, they're taking. You know what can part of it? So, when they buy a chair.
Oh, if they wanna buy a chair, look, they wanna buy a chair. Wait, let me talk right now. The judges didn't give it to me, I can't do a thing in the world with it. I'm not here for handling money. If they give me a chair, I'm gonna have a jail.
Right, well, that's where you're going.
That's exactly where it belongs. But I won't take the chair, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
But the money goes to.
The judge, you gotta see.
We're gonna do a treasure. We're gonna, we're gonna get the copy of the rental contract, and the budget.
To his office, I guess.
I'll keep them until we get somebody established.
Yeah, 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 so that they, they play the key, I mean, all that, for our purposes. So, I just wanted to see what we're gonna do there.
Maybe, if we're gonna go through the deal, I'm not gonna throw away.
No.
When are we gonna post?
I don't know if you want to, or if you want to keep it, or if you want to post it.
No, if we're gonna book it out of, of, county judge's office, all the judges are gonna get the check.
When, when are we gonna post our position?
Do we have to, and, because it's not on our agenda, do we have to have it posted? Or if we just go ahead and post it, and then, it'll be agenda when we hire the person?
But if we vote to establish a budget, which is what we're.
Disinpart a budget?
Then it's a part of the budget. It is now, it's not written down, but it is now. We've made a decision to make that a part of the budget.
Yeah. Catherine, can we just go ahead and post position?
Yeah.
I don't know why.
It'll be next week, before it comes out of the paper.
Well, that'd be fine, that'll be.
Or they're. I can post it to Facebook, or to the county website.
Yeah, put it on the website. Okay, let me ask, legal question. If Jalen puts it on the website and, and Facebook, we still have to post it in the newspaper two weeks?
I don't think we have to, though.
Okay, we can run it next week in the newspaper, post it today, and then, two weeks from today, we can hire this person. We can run it in the newspaper next week as a courtesy.
Yes.
We're just gonna need a description of what the person's gonna do for the posting. Put in an assistant to the county commissioners, and how we're gonna turn their position with the expo seat.
Okay, and this person answers to Commissioner's Court? Because they don't have four bosses? Let's just put it around five. Uh, but no, because, in, in general, this person is gonna have, like I said, four bosses come through there. You know, she's, she's gonna work, and help, do it, so, really, the ultimate thing she has to do is Commissioner's Court.
Where does it gonna come, money come from? All the commissioners, these commissioners gonna give so much money for their budget?
Yeah, 25%, that's what y'all talked about, where's it?
25% of our half. Half of it's gonna be charged to the expo seat. And then, the, the.
Okay, now, we need to establish a salary. 27.50. That's above, what we have is a entry level.
Why not 15 in here an hour, or 11 or 12?
What does 15 an hour come up to?
Over 30, right?
30 or something like that?
14.22.
Somewhere between 27,000 and 30,000, over 30.
What's that?
I said, something between 27,500 and 30.
Let's start between, I can arrange something.
Yeah, we got, we got range.
This person is going to be looking for things to do.
It's $14.
What's 27, 50?
$14 an hour, 20,000.
I like there is, I do, by the range, I don't think we'll start maybe 27,000, that might experience or something.
Okay, rate for, 27, 50 to 29, 50? Is it a booking in, or is it a signature?
Both, it's a combo.
At 27,000, barely, then 13 dollars an hour.
Yeah.
You're a kind of playing person, that one's set up.
Well, I'd say 14, 14 dollars an hour, 20,000.
29,000.
Are you gonna put a range?
But, when you look at patent insurance and.
What's into the.
And the benefits are gonna get it.
That's what you pay my girls and my girls for experience.
I'd say 27,500 to 29,500, if we have a range, a range, 27,500, and then we go to see, 47,500, 48,500.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for a temporary, is it a temporary budget, or?
A preliminary.
Preliminary budget? Not analyzed, for the.
Well, Judge, I do have, I have.
Community center?
I do have to break it down to create a budget to do the pair, well, I gotta break it down to like this.
Okay, hold on.
What about a preliminary operating?
Well, I can back it up, it's a good 65.
Okay, yeah, we're gonna establish.
A preliminary operating budget.
Preliminary operating budget of 65,000.
What the judge, my suggestion would be, the insurance, since we don't know, whatever the difference is between the 63, 85626, and 65,000, be added to the insurance estimate.
Well, that, that claim won't cost 15,500.
No. I know, but we, it's gonna be adjusted.
We can, we can adjust it later.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve, um, an operational budget for the Wilson County Expo and Community Center, um, of the bottom line number for six months, $65,000.
Motion by Commissioner Whitey, second by Commissioner Hayek. Is there any more discussion?
It'd be for nine months, correct?
For nine months, okay. Are we gonna program it to 65,000, or is 65,000 gonna be for nine months?
It's sent us here to be nine months.
Okay. Right, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, let's move right along to the agenda item number four. Yes, four, Commissioner Jackson County just workshop on road and bridge. Okay, Commissioner Fowle has been, and Mr. Duster, uh, waits to fund repair and new roads. And there's several different options out there. First option, one option is, uh, with a road, a county road and bridge tax.
And I passed out, some of our counties, which are right now, they're, they're working on a handout. I'm talking about the, the budget, but you can see my cards, charges 11, 39 for road and bridge tax, and. Add 10 cents.
Okay, a county, a road and bridge tax is an option. Another option is.
A county assistance district.
A county assistance district, which is a use tax. The road and bridge tax would be added to our environment taxes. A, uh, county assistance district would be a usage tax, which if.
And how is that?
We, we went for it here three years ago, and it failed miserably. Uh, because I don't think we had the people informed enough. It's, it's like a sales tax, but it's only in the unincorporated parts of the county. It's not inside the city limits, and it's not inside E S P two. They were on each step of the system.
Commissioner Whitey, we got the handout, I told you what it is.
Well, we don't have, I know what it is.
But the bottom line is, you guys need money to get your roads picked or to build, and we're just, we're giving you options. We don't see any other way of doing it. Commissioner, I have some better ideas, I'm probably gonna put it as a discussion, and for y'all, come out with a better way of funding what y'all need.
Well, I, I, of course, it has to be approved by the, by the citizens, I like the usage, because I think, long-term, one, it doesn't add a new layer of tax for citizens. And taxes, you know, we're not talking about adding any taxes in Florisville, Stockdale, Leve, Laverne, we're talking about unincorporated areas. So, a lot of the, whatever taxes is collected there, would be people passing through the county. As opposed to, to just our citizens. And it doesn't mean a lot of money now, but with the growth that is anticipated for Austin, San Antonio quarter, you look down the road a little bit, and you're talking about some significant change, because I keep saying, 181 from Florisville to San Antonio, and 87 from Laverne to San Antonio, in a matter of time, it's going to be, retail, retail, it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be. Now, how we communicate that to the citizens, so that they realize that it's not, you know, they're not gonna be paying more every time they go to any of the incorporated citizens, we, we missed the vote on that the last time. That's, that's the one that I personally prefer, although the other one adds more money quickly. But the other one's a whole new layer of tax.
Okay, another option is certificates of obligation. But like Commissioner Whitey was saying, the county assistance is perfect, and the road and bridge tax is perfect. So, certificates of obligation, if you're gonna go out, you're gonna, and, uh, establish how much money, revenue you're wanting to get, you're gonna get the certificates of obligation for that, and they're gonna be paid back over. That's gonna be, that's it, if there's a pile of money you got, use that for, you know, whether it be seven and a half million to 10 million, or whatever, that's what you're using over the next, and how long are you gonna take to pay that out? Because you may be through, that money may be gone, and you're still paying it out.
Exactly, and the judge, I've got all his opinions, but, um, if we were gonna do something like that, certificates of obligation, in my opinion, that would have to follow a transportation strategic plan. We'd look at the growth and the needs of the county, and it would have to be done based not upon precinct boundaries, and I'm not arguing for me, I'm saying in general, not based upon precinct boundaries, but where the strategic plan would say for the county to have an optimal, maximize the optimal amount of growth that we're gonna experience over the next decade, or next two decades, where would we need to spend this money? It wouldn't be a matter of precinct three, precinct four, two of one, but where would the county be the biggest bank for the buck? Because if you're gonna spend money like that, we have roads, and we have to take care of it. So, the question would be, one, do we do it, and just go in and take care of our existing pavement? What are we gonna do it, how are we gonna handle it, what are the standards of the roads that we're gonna build? But it would be, to me, it would be a matter of, okay, if we do this level of transportation improvements, then that's going to mean in these areas, more subdivisions, which is going to mean more tax revenue, which is going to lower the burden of tax on the citizens. Because there's so much, to me, that's how that happens, that's just me. But it's gotta be planned, and it can't be a matter of, you know, whoever the commissioners are, whether it's us or someone else, sitting here probably saying, you know, I want my fair share, I want my 25%, or I want, you know, I've got 35% of the roads, or whatever the number is, so I should get 35%. If we're gonna do that, then it has to be very formal, and threw away over precinct boundaries that we've got. And the deal with what it is, the best of the county, that's my opinion.
That's what I, you still have to look at the population?
Oh, I, I.
That's, that's gonna be a big issue of, where are you giving all your people that are gonna go for it? They say, well, I voted for this one, and I'm only gonna take a percentage. And you're not gonna put so much money, and that's why you have to. I mean, that's all the thing that is gonna be thrown out there, when we go and try to sell something like that.
Well, and, and this is gonna fall, I mean, the, that's gonna fall more, um, I mean, just looking at areas, it's gonna look, it's gonna fall on the area north of Florisville, I mean, whatever's up in there, it needs to be, and again, from Laverne, 87, and two, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to take anything away from precinct four, I'm just saying that it needs, the county needs to get the bank for the buck.
All right.
You know, you know.
Well, it's a better true fact, sure, it would be, if the structure, steward, ward, but, okay. I mean, we can have all that through road one, we can't come up with a way for the, the complex, the other assessment, road one.
Yeah, well, then, Jim, that's something that, from cost, the, the solar is, is so above what we can do. There are, the judge and I met about a year ago, with a developer, and, um, there are ways that you can do that, there is a, and I don't remember all the details, but there was a tax. If I'm a developer, and I had a 500-acre piece of property, and I wanted to, to do smaller lots, so I, I have to have a sewer system, then the people within the, there are avenues to do that, and the people that bought in there would pay the tax to pay that off. And it would not affect any of the other citizens, except the ones that go in and buy.
What that is, is, you know, I think, is a county approval district. In that, they, there's a specific area, and that specific area is taxed, and that's what, one of the things that you could use that money for is, say, a sewer system. And if you had, like, the developers, they had Kevin Brown, they were, Tim Halsel, came out there, and they were trying to push this, what, evidently, they had access to some way, or that's what they did, is they did sewer, sewerage treatment development, sewage plants, and development like that. And they were wanting to go through it. Y'all need to get this improvement district, and higher need, to put a sewer system in for you.
But, but, the way it was written, is the county should never be obligated. If the, if the subdivision fell.
Yeah.
Then the county did not receive obligation, or whatever was put together, and then something that maybe we need to look at.
It was tied in.
But the transportation would kind of lend to that, because if we had transportation that was more interesting, I guess, for, for the developers, and suddenly they go come in, and in order to do what they want to do, and they're wanting to do, Bear County had a subdivision, where, my house, 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 house.
In my area, or the San Antonio, where it's a garden, they're studying, where they wanna do a children's plan, in my area, where the schools are. Because I know they're looking over there in the future, that they're gonna head on to that school, so, the only way they're gonna be able to do that, they're gonna have to move, actually, no plan there. And, and they did a study, I don't know if they still have it or not, and, and they could operate that system, nobody else. And that, and the people that you were talking, if that's what it, it's the people that they recruit, those are the people that are gonna pay.
Do you know if they're gonna, the public pay over this?
Yeah, the public, oh, no, the public.
Tom, how much of the public, how big a area are you talking?
I, I don't know what the study was just, I know what's part of. I, I don't know what the study was just, I know it was part of one eighty-one, and all went to the creek, and then went back, uh, I mean, it was quite a bit, and all that they were here right there.
That's not the same company, they weren't, could go seven ten in the mission.
I think, it might have been, 'cause I know the river authority was the one that were gonna install it and everything.